So it's seven oh five, uh, not seeing the chair hopped on, having come on the meeting. I'll convene this meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board for November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. I'll take a roll call vote for attendance. Uh, Bill Spalding?
Here.
Kevin York?
Here.
Matt Lowry?
Yeah.
And Jim Hogan and myself here as well. Item number one or two is the approval of the November fourteenth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes. Did any, everyone on the planning board have a chance to review said meeting minutes? And anyone have any comment?
Now, I'd like to make a motion to accept the um, meeting minutes as read.
Any, uh, any, do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, do I hear any, uh, hear any discussion before taking a roll call vote? Hearing none, I'll proceed to the vote. Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Kevin York?
Yes.
And Matt Lowry?
Yes.
And yes, for myself as well. So passes four to nothing. Item number three is the Wakefield Bylaw Review Committee. Uh, Kevin, uh, is this something that you are prepared to have an update on?
Yeah, we had a meeting on November twentieth last Monday. Um, Attorney Bobrowski was part of that meeting. That was the full group. We haven't had another, uh, subcommittee meeting focused on uh, planning board and zoning bylaws since the initial one. So this was the full group. We went through a few bylaws that Attorney Bobrowski made recommendations on. Um, I would say nothing overly significant coming out of that meeting for our interests other than the one thing that he brought up is he said that as a planning board, we should have publicly posted rules and regulations that govern our operations and our meetings so that we don't have to make updates to the overall bylaws if we want to change anything about how planning board runs and operates. He said it's become something standard that many towns have done. Um, he pointed us to the town of Lexington, um, and said that they have posted theirs. I took a quick look at those last week. He was gonna send over some additional information through, um, Chairperson Lieber. I haven't seen the additional information come through, but I will pass all that to the rest of you when I see it. Um, he made the same recommendation for, uh, zoning Board of Appeals as well to have their own rules and regulations so that they have a little bit more freedom to make changes when needed in terms of things like fees, site visits, et cetera. So I think that was the most substantial thing coming out of last Monday's meeting.
And do I have any questions for any other members of the planning board to Kevin regarding that update?
Yeah, Kevin, um, rules and regulations, what, what are you talking about procedures for acceptance of different types of projects or just overall operation?
Overall, more than on projects. So when I looked at Lexington's site, like he referred us to, they have a link to planning board procedural rules that talk about creation of the board vacancies, associate members responsibilities, quorum, participation, um, officers, roles, study committees, planning staff, meeting cadence. So it's more of a procedural thing, um, rather than how we would look at specific projects.
Cause I'm assuming, Matt, where you're going is, is that we already have a series of rules and regulations as it relates to subdivision, rules and regs and submission thereof, right?
Yeah, yeah, I was just, just trying to clarify what types of regulations. Um, so basically just operating procedures, mostly that they're looking for something documented that if someone goes vacant, what, what our standard procedure is. It's almost sort of like an operating procedure for the board itself, not necessarily for others.
Right, and his, his main point seemed to be that if we needed to change anything in those rules and regulations, then we as a planning board could change that without it having to be something that's changed as a bylaw by the town. So having, having in the bylaws, something that says along the lines of planning board is operated and governed by its rules and regulations as listed on its website, something along those lines.
I think, uh, yeah, Bill, do you have some feedback it looks like?
Yeah, just to add on to what Matt was saying, but, um, also thinking if there's five members of a planning board, I don't know if I feel comfortable knowing in the future that five members of the planning board could go ahead and change the operating rules without it actually going to a bylaw and going to town meeting. It's, it seems a little bit like it could get out of hand. I'm not sure, but that's my first thought. It's like if we all got together and said, oh, we could do this, this, and this and change how it's done. Um, and there's no governance on that. So I would, I would probably caution that we might not want to do that or have it very limited to certain things as far as how it's done. So yes, it does have to go to a bylaw and review and vote.
The only, the only counterpoint to that would be that if we wanted to change the cadence of planning board meetings, having that be something that requires, I think that would be a two thirds vote because it's a zoning. If it was really regulated as part of our zoning bylaw, may or may not be a right, the right choice. I, I don't think that's actually in our bylaw, but those types of things that are currently probably not written down in terms of our standing operating procedure. If we're gonna have something be more formalized, I don't know if you necessarily want to have that high of a threshold to change it. But I don't know, it's, it's definitely worth additional scrutiny, I would think as part of, uh, as from everyone from this board.
Yeah, something to think about and when he sends over examples, and I'd like to, to see more examples than just Lexington. That was just the one that he cited, but I can share it with everybody and then we can, we can discuss it further, but that, that is a good point, Bill.
Kevin, the other question I would ask is, was a timeline laid out as it relates to further review of the substantive zoning section similar to what Attorney Bobrowski had commenced with earlier in the year? You know, he had gone through and was listening feedback from ZBA and the planning board on specific sections of the zoning bylaw? Did that timeline and that feedback loop of, you know, feedback or your feedback loop of information and solicitation of comment be, was that defined?
No, it, it's pretty piecemeal at this point. All that we know that's coming are there's eight to ten bylaw, bylaws that, um, he sent to Dan and Dan has shared with the group in our Dropbox folder. So we know at our December fourth meeting, we'll discuss those. But the, the meeting following that, uh, at this point, we have no visibility into what that discussion will be.
And those, those ones that have been dropped into the Dropbox are, are those sections of the bylaw that are pertinent to the other members of planning board such that they should be distributed to the balance of the planning board and given the opportunity to review and comment?
Some of them are, not all of them are, but I can take a look at them and share them with you. These are, these are some that he's marked up. Some look like they don't even have markings on them yet. But yeah, I'm happy to share those with all of you.
Yeah, I, I think it, um, and Bill and Matt, I'll, I'll also request and see if you had agree, but I think it makes sense for us to get a copy of whatever Attorney Bobrowski is starting to look at in terms of redlining our bylaws in this recodification process, just such that if there's any I'll call red flags that we as a board want to raise, it'd be good to do it now rather than at, as the process unfolds farther down the line.
Yeah, the only thing that's not in here is the context behind why he made the changes. So he just has them marked up without, there aren't any margin comments or anything.
Yeah, it would be good to at least have a heads up if something is gonna be discussed, if anybody, you know, knows what's going on. Again, we're gonna have to at some point recommend or not recommend this, so it's better if you have time early on than after fact.
Yeah, let me start sharing them with the group as this Dropbox gets populated and I can see what all will be discussed in the next meeting. So I'll, I'll go through the December fourth ones tomorrow and send those over. Um, the one thing that did seem to be decided at the last meeting is that anything controversial, Dan wants to separate out and not make it part of the overall that, you know, the one set of bylaws that have to be passed together. So parking and cannabis are the two that came up in the last meeting that there could potentially be, um, controversy over and more debate. And he said he didn't want lots of debate around a more controversial issue to delay passing the larger uh, recodification of the bylaws for things that are like grammar edits.
Well, who's, um, who's deciding what's controversial or not?
At this point, it is mostly Dan, but the rest of the committee can have a say in that. I think there could be some zoning ones that could potentially be seen as controversial as well. Not that anything has come up yet, but just things that could be discussed in future meetings.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Matt's, uh, question, line of questioning. I recall when we had the initial set of comments and review of the bylaws. There was a lot of conversations around things as simple or things as straightforward as defining the nature of the town. You know, there was language in there that was referring to Wakefield as a rural community, for example, which would theoretically be the basis of standing. And there's some, I'll call cleanup items that needed to be addressed of that or defining the threshold for CBA acceptance of findings. You know, things of that nature that, you know, theoretically should be technical enough that won't, but there's, where is that threshold?
It really is not an objective line at this point.
And I, I would almost think as a matter of policy that if any any issue comes up that deals with a certain board that they would hopefully have the heads up before it came up for discussion and then continue to edit through it anyways. Um, so if it was ZBA, I don't know if they notified the ZBA that this is something actually coming up and you don't want to pay attention to it. Same with planning board, any other department that may be affected, hopefully, uh, it's not gonna be a surprise to people.
No, Dan still wants to share those with all the relevant parties before they get to that point to, to try to get buy-in from everyone.
Alright, good.
Okay, anything else on the bylaw review committee before I move to item number four? Okay, item number four, MBTA community slash section three A, I'll take this update. We had the, the Q and A at our last meeting as everyone here is aware of. So I thought we had a robust conversation around the feedback from the public related to the proposed multifamily zoning district. Since the, our last meeting as a planning board, the working group met again to go through and continue to refine the zoning bylaw. I anticipate that that is going to go through another round of reviews by each of the individual working group members. Be, uh, requested to provide feedback in the near term and then another round of review from our town staff members, which I know Aaron is in the process of soliciting. Based on that, hope the intent would be to have a bylaw that would be able to be finalized, finalized in the January timeframe based on when we need to get that bylaw presented to town council, which would give them enough time to refer to the planning board and allow us to have, they believe the, uh, feedback from town staff is they want to have at least two public meetings held by the planning board in a more formalized fashion prior to that being put on the town warrant. Uh, reading between the lines, I think that the, the feedback as it relates to the stretch bylaw, the stretch, um, stretch energy code and the comment there's one public meeting was a feeling amongst town staff that that wasn't maybe necessarily enough and that they want to increase it to two on the basis of that feedback at town meeting in order to help alleviate that concern of the public. So, uh, if there's other members of planning board that have any additional feedback, more than happy to take it and otherwise we can punt any of these conversations to the next question and answer, public forum, which is gonna be held at our next meeting, regularly scheduled planning board meeting on December twelfth. Bill?
Um, yeah, thanks for meeting as a, as a subgroup. It was a working group. The video was posted, which was excellent. I only noticed it like a half hour ago, so I watched as much as it, as I could. There was a lot of great ideas from the working group and I really appreciate the time that's gone into it and like the, the really deep listening and understanding of what it means. And I know the words are gonna be hard to really form to get it really clear. Um, I would like to suggest that on the timeline video, you do keep the previous meetings that we had and not remove them. So it does show the history as well as what's happening coming up. Um, I know that was one of the suggestions or one of the slides that you were updating in the video. So again, I do appreciate the video and um, kind of wish I knew about it earlier. I probably did. I just didn't realize it. So that was super helpful. Um, and I really liked the conversation. Um, so again, I appreciate the time and I, I really like the direction we're going in. I'm super excited for the next meeting. And Jim, you've been doing an outstanding job with the presentation. So I think, I don't know if the board agrees or disagrees, but you definitely win the presenting at town meeting vote for me because you've done this so many times. So as we do move forward, um, that's all. Thanks.
Thanks for the kind words. The, uh, actually that reminds me, Bill, the one other thing I should mention to this group before, um, our next meeting is the working group, one of the things that we reviewed, we felt based on some of the feedback we were getting that we didn't necessarily provide enough feedback or background as it relates to why the state is past the three A law. So we added a handful of slide beginning of the presentation, talking about the housing crunch and some of the impacts that you know, I, I think a lot of people can understand kind of from, uh, you know, feeling the housing market being the way it is and the, the housing crunch. But there's some additional backup as it relates to data that we got from a couple of sources that kind of help illustrate that point a little bit better, uh, as we're going through that. Uh, you know, why did the state pass this law, uh, explanation? So you'll see that as part of that December twelfth meeting. And then we also are working on a couple of slides in the back that would be for reference for some, to specifically address some of the questions that have come up, but aren't necessarily, uh, items that we want to have in the base presentation. If it comes, if topics come up, we can provide additional slides to that, to address those specific questions, so around historical War Forty B.
Yeah, I liked, um, another comment. I, I liked Greg's, um, information on the historic and addressing that too. That was helpful to understand the two different types. Um, meaning is there a district versus actually this property that is, um, labeled as or noted as historic? Um, question about the Q and A sheet. If that is something that's gonna happen, is that something that's worth having on the webpage with right, right, right below the presentation? If there's like a frequently asked questions?
So I think it probably is and it's, it's candidly something that we need to start collecting all that information and putting it in one spot. Uh, that's one of the, the to-dos as it relates to that, as we continue to go through the balance of this process.
Understood.
Uh, any other questions from the members of the board?
N- not a question, but I, I do like that you're putting that statistical quantitative analysis of why there is a housing crisis and what that means at the beginning. That's come up, I feel like a number of times where people don't quite understand and it's more like there's a feeling or anecdotal evidence that there is. And there was a, there was a data point that was in the appendix of, um, the previous version before this most recent update that, um, I think did a nice job. So if it goes deeper on that, I, I think that would be good, not just through the state, but in Wakefield as well.
Yeah, for reference, one of the things that we're adding is, is some information as it relates to the market increase in housing pricing within Wakefield over the past five years, just pulling Redfin data as well as uh, talking about what the vacancy rate is in Wakefield compared to what is considered a healthy vacancy rate based on some information we have from the Wakefield Housing Forum that was held in, I believe, twenty twenty one. So it's a couple of years out of date, but it's, yeah, I think some of that, I don't think any of the dynamics fundamentally have altered. So thank you for that. Um, with all that being said, uh, Aaron, is there anything else that you'd like to add or, or do you think we've got it covered?
Uh, just to note, we'll be in front of the TAC meet, um, TAC on Friday. They have their meeting and I know that's an important meeting for us to discuss parking and traffic because that's been brought up quite a bit. So, uh, we'll be in front of them on Friday morning. And there'll be a recording, so if you want to watch.
And for members of the public, TAC is? Traffic Advisory.
Advisory Committee.
Okay, anything else, uh, three A? Seeing all their comments and move on to item number five, subdivision rules and regs. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure who this resides with. Uh, is that with you, Bill?
Sure, um, yeah, Theo has been setting up some appointments and we met, um, with Bill Reno and our next meeting is on Monday, December fourth at one P M. And we're hoping for some feedback from Bill and just moving forward what, what the next steps are, but it's moving forward. We'll get the next meeting.
What day was that? I thought I missed it.
Sorry, it, is mine coming through? Okay, um, Monday, December fourth at one P M. Theo and I are meeting with Bill Reno.
Okay. Any other questions or feedback from other members of the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll move over to item number six. Future agenda items. Uh, I'm assuming that based on the fact that Theo's not here, that this item can be skipped unless anyone else from the board has something specifically they want to talk about?
I, I do have something quick, um, and it's, it's more about, um, a town meeting, the let me get the phrase correctly, but the specialized energy code passed. And I wanted to, just to see if there's anything that it impacts our board as far as, um, moving forward and that doesn't go into effect, I believe, until June or July. But it would be good as we get further along to see if there are any items that we would need to look at moving forward. And what keeps coming to my mind is when a project goes in front of the ZBA and a lot of times Matt has been there, I have been there to ask about um, solar panels or some type of, um, non-fossil fuel energy and how that's working. So, or how that's part of the project. Just want to see if that's something that our board needs to, to review.
So just, just so I can be clear about it, you're asking if you think that the adoption of the specialized opt-in energy code, is there anything that we would need to do from a zoning perspective?
Yeah, or just in our meetings, just to be educated on it, to make sure that we understand if there's any implications for our board as we're reviewing drawings and understanding, especially when we do get those packets, um, for the ZBA that we, we might have some comments on those. And I'm thinking this is something that could give us a little backing when we do add our comments. Jim, I know you look a little perplexed.
I'm just, I'm trying to think of what, what, what we would do, um.
Right, well, this is just, that's why I think we just need to review it. I think as a board, we should take a closer look at the new code and see if there's anything that applies to our board. When we're reviewing ZBA packets or if we have anything that could be added to our subdivision rules.
Yeah, I, the only reason I'm pausing, I'm trying to think of as far as the, the items that I'm aware of from my professional life of what's included in there that would impact us. You know, I think, I know that there is a, some requirements as it relates to the percentage of class to non-glass on facade, but I'm not a hundred percent sure if we would necessarily want to get involved with that.
I don't think so.
Yes, items related to future proofing and electrical, you know, conversion from any fossil fuel or i.e. natural gas to electrical, but I don't, the only thing I could think of that maybe impacted our board would be anything with, you know, future allocations for, uh, solar panels. But I'm not sure if that would be something we, we would want to be commenting on or if that's something that would defer to the ZBA.
Yeah, I'm not sure, which is why I think we should just have, sorry to interrupt. I just think it's something that our board, maybe it's a future session that each of us takes some time to review it. And if we have any comments, we can bring it to a meeting and discuss if it's something that our board wants to pursue as, um, something that could help back some of our, I mean, the example I think of, and this is not related to the energy code, but when, um, with affordable housing and when we look at the units that are proposed in a ZBA packet, we often make comments back to make sure that they are getting the correct number. So there could be something simple in there like that, that our board could add comments to with the backing of the code.
Okay. Uh, Matt, I saw you unmuted. Did you have some, some feedback you wanted to provide?
Um, well, the only feedback on this is we, theoretically, we could be doing a site family review. We are one of the boards that do annual site family reviews. We haven't done it in years. But I think we would just point to and rely on the actual building code to make sure that the stuff is done. So we would, I assume that we would redo plans to make sure the provisions are there knowing what's required, but we would have to rely more on the building department to make sure that they're actually, uh, through with them.
Yeah.
That would be the only, the only thing that I could see that we might have more than just a passing review for ZBA application.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out as well in my head because if it's in building code, the only way to get relief from it would be for a variance from the the AHJ, which in that case for most of those items would be, I believe, the state. But honestly, that's to your point, Bill, maybe it's just an education component that we need to do on our end, make sure that we're not missing anything. So good, a good, good one to put on the list. I'll, uh, make sure I transmit something to Theo to put on his radar. Uh, any other future agenda items that anyone from, on the board wants to raise?
Um, there, we may have quite a core. There was, um, you know, there's some development or one of the others there. I, I think it would depend on when the applicants must bring this forward because there are gonna need to be some changes to the original approval or some, some landscape requirement or in a butter. But, you know, we, we, we can't go forward with it on the agenda until the applicants are quite ready for it. So you just should be aware of that.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? Uh, hearing none, I'll move over to item number seven, item not anticipated by the chair. Uh, anyone have any items that they would like to discuss at this time? Bill Spalding?
Thanks, Jim. Um, if you don't know, the next town council meeting on the eleventh, the bike ped plan will be presented in its edited form. I believe maybe for the third time in front of the town council. So if you, um, if you're not aware, it's on the town website and it's good to review. There's a lot of information there, a lot of maps and sections that it's, it's, it's not a, um, as a town council reviews it, they're not approving a specific plan, but they're approving best practices. So we're looking at this as a guidebook moving forward for what layouts are possible for different areas. But each one of those will be reviewed, um, by our town engineer, Bill Reno, Erin Kokinda, and the town council before anything is put into action. I think Bill Reno said there's forty I think Bill Renault said there's forty five different projects, but that bike ped plan is really guidelines or best practices. So we at least have those in place and that's what the town council will be voting for. So if anybody has any questions about that, feel free to reach out to me. We do have a safe streets uh working group meeting tomorrow evening at the Americal. At seven in the heritage room, if anybody's interested.
Okay. Any other items unanticipated by the chair?
I just wanted to add, I should have a better update for the master plan at our next meeting, um, kind of where we're at. Um, it's been a little out of standstill because of um my efforts have been to the bike ped plan, um, trying to get. Push that through and kind of finalize it based on on many of the council's comments and. Uh, thank you, Bill, for kind of clarifying what this plan is, um, but hopefully I'll have a better update and maybe I could talk to Theo about possibly making it an agenda item. Uh, but the project is still moving forward. It's um, yeah, I'll have a better. Better summary next time.
Aaron, is there, do you have a and and maybe next time is the is the right answer, but is there an idea of when the master plan? Is there a targeted submission day at this point?
I am hoping by the springtime um that we'll have a finalized project, project end winter, end of winter, early spring. Um, there was just a lot of things that had to be fixed up before it went out to public for public comment.
Understood, and then is is the intent of having the the master plan, is that going to be a. Document that we would foresee as being the basis of any of the. Bylaw recodification or any other zoning efforts that may spring out of that, that that would, the intent would be that would be a spring board for that, for any of those efforts that may be to be to come?
Um, for the spring town meeting, I'm sorry, is what you're talking about for, no?
No, so I guess my question is that is 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 the master plan? Is it, for lack of a better term, a call to action to actually? Takes any, are there any recommendations that we anticipate are going to result in? Recommendations in a master plan to change zoning that we we as a board would need to start?
I would imagine so. Yeah, I would imagine so. I'm hoping, you know, we will have a draft of the document. I'm, you know. Saying later dates, hoping that we have something sooner, uh, but I definitely think that there'll be some things out of the zoning um chapter. Where we as a planning board may want to dig deeper. Um, as we look at some of our zoning throughout town and make recommendations to as part of the zoning recodification and just overall zoning in general throughout the community.
Okay, yeah, that that answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items? Seeing none, uh, I'd be uh, is there anyone who is willing to put forth a motion to adjourn?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Kevin, we'll call vote. Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And yes for myself, the motion passes forward enough. Nothing. Thank you guys for the uh quick meeting and uh I'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, Jim.